I quickly just to the flag. Greetings and welcome to the Harvard Committee.
Hi, Don.
Okay.
How about fifty miles away, so?
Here we have Lenny Fell, Mary Ann Eddy, Herbert Samble, and at the end, we have Hillary Thayer. Carrie, Carrie Pye is standing in for Doris. Our counsel, Elizabeth Hales. And running the show tonight is Brad Briner from Nelson Pope Enterprises. Welcome you all. Have a different agenda, so let's start with the minutes. Opportunity to read them minutes.
I did it, actually.
What's all the background?
There it goes.
All right, oh, I didn't say that John Parker is zooming. So do I hear a motion to approve them? Well, do I have any questions as of now?
No, I do.
I must do them very briefly. I'm happy to.
No questions. I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Then do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
All those in favor? Okay, so the motion has been approved. Carrie, I guess we can move on to that. At this point, we have ten minutes of public session. Is anybody that would like to come up and speak about anything in general? Is there anybody in the audience here that would like to speak? What are you guys all here for then?
Come on.
Is anybody online? Okay, great. So moving forward. Item number one. Twenty-seven Harding Terrace. Is there somebody for that project here? Matt's here. There's Matt.
Afternoon board. I've been the applicant. We were here last month. This is for a beach active stairway. The only requests by the board by Brad was to elevate the stairway by eight inches and then establish some planting underneath it on the top. It's down. The demonstrator be updated of plan from the plan. And that was about it.
I think that the application is in order. He did devise plans and they did address the board's comments from the last hearing, so MBB did draft a permit which you all should have found you and the board's ready if you walk through it. If there are more questions. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but were you elevating the first landing, landward landing?
The main landing, yeah, we're elevating it by another eight inches. And we're a little bit more light in.
And that you're gonna try to put planting underneath there?
We're doing a little bit of beach grass because the top deck is still below anyway, so you're gonna have a little bit of sunlight passes through.
Okay.
The idea is to give a little bit of warm up, you know, to help it establish stuff, a little bit more light.
Great.
That's that material, the pass-through material for the.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you and your clients for doing this because the neighbor to the east has something that's not kosher and there's probably half a dozen de havens that.
Yeah, they got metal on that for the east of the.
Aluminum, yeah.
Yeah, aluminum.
Yeah. Great, okay, Brad.
Okay, so the application before you is for a four-by-twenty-five-foot beach access stairway traversing the block from the outlined areas of the beach. All of the areas of disturbance will be restored in kind with the planned materials without line of inciting plans and athletic plans provided by the applicant's agents. This is a proposed activity that is consistent with chapter two twenty-five requirements. And it's considered a type-two action. This is part of six, seven, key, section twelve, or construction expansion or replacement of a minor accessory appearance residential structure. This is a, this is part of the exempt and coastal consistency. And we believe the permit is in order, subject to standard conditions outlined in the permit that is in front of you. I'll walk you through this very quickly. All of the shopping going through the plans. The applicant must verify that all applicable permits for proposals and improvements have been obtained without prior performance of work. All construction debris shall be gathered during active construction. A rose control, a closing control fence will be installed along with those limits of disturbance, preventing from leaving the construction area, all work vehicles, debris, and construction materials necessary to complete the approved work shall be stayed on site. The acceptance of the approval, knowledge that continuing jurisdiction. You know what, I see it type over here. This reference to the long road. Does not impact the decision, but we can have it be written for clarity. Again, the acceptance of this approval also acknowledges continuing jurisdiction of the Harvard Committee. Prior to commencement of work, the applicant should provide a copy of this permit with content discussed with the contractor. The permit shall be permitted where it shall be executed in a manner that avoids any adverse impacts to the neighboring properties enjoying wetlands, surface waters, the village building, department, and village environmental consultants shall be notified upon commencement of completion of approved activities. Final survey prepared by a licensed land surveyor shall be submitted for Harvard upon the completion of approved activities. This survey shall demonstrate the location, dimension, area calculation, and wetland setbacks of all site improvements associated with this wetland. Once the beach stairway has been constructed and areas underneath alongside the beach access were implanted, as depicted on the approved plans and survey, it shall be inspected and approved by the village environmental consultant prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy that should probably be prior to the certificate of occupancy or certification where the building department needs necessary. But again, those are fairly standard conditions for our product of the scope. We believe the application to be in order. The permit cites the proposed plans that are being approved as part of this permit, and the permit will be valid for a period of two years from the date of issuance.
Who makes, I guess the building department makes the decision about whether it affects the CFO or?
So it's either a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of compliance.
Completion, maybe.
Something that the building department recognizes, you know, that the charter is built pursuant to the public permit prepartals.
Yeah.
We're only talking about the beach access, right? So there's nothing to be occupied.
Correct.
So it might be compliance.
Department wasn't certified.
Right. Um, any question? I can make a motion. Make a motion to accept as Brad just outlined to us.
Right here, second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion's been passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a little laborious, and I much appreciate it.
Good work, Seth.
The next item is correspondence requiring action. One ninety-two Redwood Road. The resolution to commence CPRO. And coordinate the lead agency.
I don't understand.
Well, is something Brad wants to go on?
Sure. So the applicant for the one ninety-two Redwood Road has submitted and from an applicant agency you for the construction of the shoreline. And it's private, that is, you know, looking into the future of shore climbing improvements throughout Long Island, the region, you know, and global ecosystems. This could, you know, in my opinion, is going to be a good project, but there is a protocol to adhere to as part of the procedures, so the village code, chapter two seventy-five. And in addition to chapters one twenty-five and the CPRO criteria in general, identify activities based on type-one, type-two, or unlisted criteria. Due pursuant to the village code standards, this project would be deemed a type-one action because they are falling under the criteria of any project which directly fills or dew-watered wetlands or water bodies or has any other activities within those water bodies pursuant to that type of action.
Interesting.
So because they are installing a rock sill in the underwater lands and then filling behind it to recreate the intertidal marsh areas, technically by letter of the law, that qualifies as a type-one action.
And the neighboring property did not trigger the same thing?
No.
Because I thought they were putting stuff in the water as well to break the wave action, no?
No, no, theirs was either at the high watermark or above. That was part of what was
Yeah.
rigorous.
Right, you're right. Yeah.
And this one is actually in the waterway itself. You know, there are going to be several I don't remember the distance, but it's probably maybe fifty to eighty feet from in high water into the water. You know, with actual action activities. Again, it's a good project. Once you guys understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Presented to you, you'll see the importance of these living shores.
Right.
Yeah, especially.
But in order to address the type-one action requirements, we need to conduct CPRO in a manner where
Thank you.
this board has to
Thank you.
make a request to deem itself under occupancy. So I believe Liz that drafted a resolution for you to consider tonight to put out a referral to the involved agencies requesting a designation of the agency, which makes sense. And that way we can commence the secret process as part of the public hearing process once the application is so what we're doing is we're trying to find a way to fast-track the review so that we can get out in front of the overall review process, doing CPRO as much as we can now, which is getting the coordinated review process out of the way, so that way, once the application is deemed complete, we can hit the ground running. We can get into the public hearing process and the applicant can get it for you and you can go figure out what your concerns are and have them address them as we're waiting for the remainder of the recording review process to be.
And who are we coordinating with in that review?
At minimum, it will be T C, Department of State, Army Corps of Engineers, town trustees. I don't believe there's any other village.
That's all.
Not for this application.
No.
Okay.
So if all the people that are going to be issuing permits on this project are just going to get recognition that this is a type-one action, you guys are assuming the CPRO component of it, so they can say, okay, the secret's being handled by the village harbor committee. We're acknowledged that is due to agency and they're going to handle that.
Okay.
So I recommend you consider the resolution tonight so that you can commence that process. If you have any questions about technical matters of that, I would answer those. But I believe it's in order.
Do you want us to vote on this tonight?
Yes.
Is there anything here that Brent didn't hit on?
I'll just say you send it to the other agencies that are involved.
Right.
Thirty days to respond. If they don't respond, then you can assume lead agency for the next meeting, just start a CPRO.
Okay.
And even though the application might not be as sufficient as required for a public hearing, it's sufficient enough to afford a CPRO.
Oh, I should have touched on that, yes. In order for us to have you adopt this resolution tonight, we at least needed the applicant to submit a full environmental assessment form, which we just received, I believe, yesterday. And we quickly reviewed it and it is sufficiently complete enough for you to take action tonight on the still being.
Thanks for putting this together so quickly.
Sure.
I know it's pretty typical, but John, do you have questions?
No, I'm fine.
Anybody have any questions? I think this is a really exciting project.
Yeah.
Just have to make a motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept this, what is it? It's a resolution? Adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the resolution commenced CPRO has been passed.
Oh, there's one. So Liz?
So we need to sign this, I guess.
Yeah, I think there's one master coming down.
Oh, is there?
So I've been working with some people through the bitonic advisory partnership and trying to like figure out how situations like this, nature-based shorelines are handled by the towns, the villages, all the different jurisdictions around the bitonic. And this is the first time we've really had something like this come up. So I had told them before, oh, it just comes to the harbor committee and we go thumbs up, thumbs down, and not quite what I said, but that's kind of the idea. Obviously, that's not the case. So can I get from you sort of a a brief description of what our process is when, I guess it's a matter of when it's sorry.
Me for CPRO?
Yeah, when it's become CPRO.
So it's a type-one, you may want to actually recommend, since it's such an to the environment.
Right.
These projects that they not be considered type-one actions. It's only the village code that triggers it to become type-one action, requiring coordinated review under CPRO and a more full environmental review for CPRO. But if these projects, if you can determine that they really do benefit the environment ultimately, you may want to make an exception or make, recommend to the village board to do a local law to amend the code to make an exception for restoration projects like this.
And we could manage that just here in the village? It's not like a DEC state or?
No.
So that basically.
It would just be taking it off the village codes list of type-one action.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good idea.
To understate law.
Which saves how much time?
It would save a lot of time.
Save months.
Yeah, months, right?
Yeah.
Many months.
At least thirty days.
Would you be willing to write something like that up that for our review so that we could pass it to the village board?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
And then I don't have to tell them about our long laborious process. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. One eighty-eight Redwood Road. Request for two-year extension to the wetlands permit.
My computer just died.
Okay.
I'm going to be going blind.
So we're going to adjourn this meeting, you know?
No, I have a lot of it's in memory, so I can, I can I can get through this. So one eighty-eight Redwood is the project that Mary Ann just mentioned, right next door to one ninety-two. Again, the harbor committee worked at length with the applicant's agents to devise a good project that made sense for the stabilization of that shoreline. It appears to me that they are asking for a two-year extension because they did not execute the project. I am not, I don't know what the reason for having not completed the project is, but given the complexity of the project in its review, I went out and looked at the site. In my opinion, the site conditions are relatively consistent with what was acknowledged during the original discussion deliberation of this. You know, if anything, I would just ask the board to just maybe question the applicant as to, you know, what thought process is on the leg, you know? It doesn't look like they could execute any of the permitted activity. So maybe there's just an acknowledgement as to whether they know when it's going to start, I mean, if there is any.
Who are they?
Is there anybody here? No. Is there anybody? Because when they came in the first time, it was like, oh, we have to put this bulkhead up right now because we are losing our land. It's like, you know, tomorrow afternoon is too late. Say what?
Costello Marine requested the extension.
Maybe it comes down to cost.
Well, is it to be cynical, to play the cynical card, would this be something like kicking the can down the road while they sell the property, if that's in fact?
I could, I would speculate, I just.
I mean, the reason I ask that is it, is it advisable that we grant this right now?
I, I, listen, I, Liz can advise you on this, but I don't think it hurts for you to ask the applicant what the situation is.
Right.
Yeah.
Because if they've we give them another two years, the erosion could be to such a stage that the plan that we approved doesn't work anymore.
That was why I was asking the board to make this consideration is to have the applicant come in and explain the situation. What are the current circumstances? I was looking for my site photos when the computer crashed on me. But yeah, have them come in and give you a presentation and say.
I think that's a good idea.
Let's, let's, let's hear what you're thinking.
It's also Costello, I'm saying?
It's Costello.
And Costello was working on one.
On the previous.
On one and two as well.
Right.
Perhaps there is an understanding that they want to work the projects together, which is, I think, something that the harbor committee discussed with them.
Right.
You know, sort of thinking outside.
Encourage them to do that, yeah.
Was involved, so it all does make sense if that's what they're waiting for. Just would like to hear it, you know?
I would like you to touch base with your colleague, Chris Voorhees. This is, if he's still around and accessible. Chip, what did I say?
Chris.
Never mind. Mr. Voorhees.
Chris actually works with our office, too.
There you go.
That's why you were confused.
That's what she meant.
And ask him, especially looking at your pictures, whether or not the situation has changed. Because he spent a lot of time on, you were?
Yeah, I was involved with Chick. You know, I was the one who was doing all of the behind-the-scenes work with him.
Okay.
Looking at all of it. So in my opinion, the situation is relatively consistent. There's a little bit of erosion happening there. You know, there's temporary stopgases that they haven't, that they hadn't.
Yeah, core logs.
So the remnants are still there, but you can tell that they're getting battered, you know, they might have replaced a couple of them here and there. But it's relatively quasi-stable enough to live through if they're, if that's in fact what they're trying to do, live through to get through while they're waiting for one ninety-two to be executed. You know, maybe it makes sense, I don't know, but it would be helpful for us just to hear from them and what their thoughts.
Yeah, it's set to happen.
So how do we, how do we make that ask?
I think that it's a simple having Carrie or Doris reach back out to the applicant and ask them to be here. I thought I had sent an email to you or Doris suggesting that that happened, that you should have been here tonight.
Yeah.
To explain the situation. It would have put, I think, everybody at ease and we could have got past this, or you could have had your opportunity to answer questions, ask questions without the answers.
Could we consider just giving them a one-year extension?
You can, you can give them a one-year extension.
Well, maybe the first thing to do is hear their story.
Right.
Then Carrie, could you, could you work with Doris to draft a
Yeah.
A question?
They sent, they just sent a letter requesting a two-year extension that this permit expires on four, seven, twenty twenty-four. And at this time, the work, the approved work has not been completed. It's the only thing that they said.
Well, it's expired on April seventh, so that's why they want to make sure you extend it.
Right.
So.
But it's Costello that sent the request?
Yes.
Have they started work? Do we know? We don't know, do we?
When I was there on site.
It does not appear.
A month ago, shortly after we got the request.
It just says the work, the approved work has not been completed.
It was so.
I don't remember there being a permit.
Oh, for one eighty-eight, there is a permit.
No, no, a machine's building permit, yeah.
I, I didn't see any sign of the work having been completed.
So does it, how would you do it if this were your property, one of these two, would you do them at the same time because they're so interlocked? Or would you do eighty-eight before ninety-two, or is there any kind of if-then statement going on here?
Two single and separate lots.
Yeah.
For people.
Yeah, there's going to be staging and whatnot that I think the important thing here is to hear from the applicant, what their reason is, and let's then make a decision. If that happens next month, their permit will expire at the meeting day?
No, it's after the meeting.
Okay, so then there's a little window for them. If they show up, we have it, we ask, ask our questions, they give their response, and based on that information, we can give them the extension if we feel necessary. And isn't that a?
That's good. Because it is, there is a little, I mean, I think a lot of the damage that's on one eighty-eight is due to the situation at one ninety-two, correct?
That's what the.
That's the original.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot going on there.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think that, I think the projects stand alone in their own merits, but I can see where you can look at them collectively as well, so I would like the applicant to make their case, and then you guys can.
Agree.
This is one.
So Carrie, could you, you can get that so that at our next meeting, hopefully, they'll be there.
I thought we saw like pictures of where their shoreline, their land used to be like out there.
So do we need to make a motion on this or just? All right, so do I hear a motion to?
To postpone to table?
I guess the table is with the proviso that.
Table for the next meeting.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table this till the April meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so appreciate it if you could take care of that, Carrie.
And are we asking both applicants to come or just Costello or?
One request.
Just.
Yeah.
Okay.
But one ninety-two is not ready to be discussed at the public hearing yet.
Right, so.
Right.
But we'll get the information.
There's a chance that in May, you know, they have three, they can everything, or two and a half weeks, everything taken care of.
Be interesting to hear from Costello.
Absolutely.
About how the coordination between.
I think that's. Okay, item number two, David Burke and Anita Leahy, sixty-two Joe's Lane.
Number one, Pumpkin, you have to just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To adjourn that.
You're right, pardon me. Item number one, twenty-two Long Point, Pumpkin Partners. They have submitted a letter asking us that we adjourn this until April's meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn it till April meeting.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this seems to be a standard thing. All right, so item number two. Sixty-two Gold Lane, is there someone here for this project?
This is, this is pending record ZBA, and ZBA's meeting last month was, was canceled because they didn't have a quorum, so it's going to this month. So they would be in the German if you could adjourn it. I'll make a motion to adjourn this.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So sixty-two Gold Lane has been adjourned until
April.
Or until ZBA has to review this first, correct? Yeah.
But I understand they dropped the pickleball court?
I can't, I don't know. I haven't, it hasn't been heard at ZBA, yes.
Uh huh.
All right.
Moving on to new business. One, seven, four Main Street. All right.
Hi, Craig Rhodes.
Hi, Craig.
The historic museums. I think you've seen all the information that we've submitted. We're just asking to be able to build this small edition. Museum of Blue and is basically, there's already a building back there which we're rotating and putting the building next to it for the connection link that we think are successful path for the public. We are better aware that
They're nowhere yet.
Within the seventy-five feet. Set back in the wetlands. We are actually, the main building is also within seventy-five feet. But we're going to lift the building off the ground. It's not going to be touching the ground. We're not going to dig any basement or anything like that, and we are also connected to the, connecting to the river system. We will not have a set, a set of system. So we feel that we can minimize the effect the building will have on the environment there. Very, we will be committed to keeping the environment as pristine as possible. So I don't know. So um, I don't know what else to say about it, but uh, we'll, we'll. We're very careful during this. All the necessary. Uh, barriers to preventing soil coming, washing down into the wetlands and uh. I looked at also into what was mentioned this issue, I mean, dangerous species uh. That hangs around there, but we won't hear that. Uh, and um, I call for the uh. State and also federal of. It's going regarding it, and federal doesn't consider that a um.
Having an area where there's a, there's a problem with that particular feature.
So um. Who would ask for it?
Alright, she didn't open the top. Uh, again, my computer's down, so all my notes, but as you recall, um, thank you for all your efforts.
I know what your medal, I have your medal.
Oh, I have it too, if you want.
My mother doesn't have all my notes, but um. Yeah, we got an as that the um. Historical Society is trying to go at this by themselves, so we're trying to be as helpful as possible. There is a lot of technical aspects that the board usually looks at for these types of applications. There also are exceptions that the board can make in regards to. Projects that stand on their own merits, um, this is possibly one where the board wants to consider that. You know, as was presented, um. The proposed structures not meet the required setback requirements, and generally when we look at the standards, you know, as to, you know, when those. Um, setbacks can be varied. Um, I believe this is one of those circumstances where if you weigh the public benefits versus. And existing cut site conditions versus the potential for impact, you know, this one might check that box. Uh, secondarily, and another thing that's a little bit unsure is to whether or not there is a recognition by Historical Society that. They would be required to. Covenant the fifty foot buffer area between the wetland boundary and the proposed upland routes. Um, again, we, we tried to outline that in the memos and expressing that that's an important part of. What the board tries to do, um, but we weren't able to secure a plan from them that actually recognizes the fifty foot vegetative buffer part. So, we would ask that the board still work with the Historical Society to make sure that they're aware of that. And that um, you know, if the board wanted to vary the width of that buffer, that there be an understanding as to where that line is drawn on a map. So, we just need to know where the buffer is going to be, and if the harbor committee is going to want to see it covenanted like they generally would. To ensure that it stays in its natural state, or that it be revegetated or reverted back to a natural state. That's something that, in my opinion, because this site is connected to public sewer, we don't have to worry about the I A system component of it. Um, there is a recognition that they are, you know, looking to do, you know, a larger building. Within the required setback requirements, sorry, the required wetland setbacks. Um, but again, the project has a need, and the need can't be fulfilled, I believe there was an alternative. Analysis that they provided, you know, they they did look at alternative areas on the sites, and they have reasons for why. They cannot make that happen, so that's something that this board would generally look at, you know, as part of their. Standards for um, varying the setback requirements. And um, again, I think that. If the Harb, if the Harbor Committee was willing to work with the Historical Society. And figure out how we get the the covenant to buffer sorted out. And the application, you know, seems to 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 meet her her standards.
I don't see why we can't provide a fifty foot buffer, um. Where the closest our building comes to uh, the designated wetland is fifty one feet.
So it could, it could get a little tight, so we, this board.
Before we even go there, I mean, we have structures within the seventy five feet foot setback. So, tell me why. This is different than any other application that comes into us where we. You know, say this is the law. Why do I hear the consultant saying like we need to sort of. Be flexible here, I think next week we're gonna have five people lined up with. Applications where we're expected to be flexible, I'm being facetious, but tell me what's happening here.
That's why I'm saying you should look at your standards, you know, you do have, you do have. Criteria outlined in your code that gives you the ability to vary setback requirements.
For nonprofit specifically?
Well, not, you know, you look, you have to weigh all of the the merits of each of the applications, so. It, again, to their credit, they were trying to do everything. By themselves, it sounded like they had a limited budget, you know. It, in order for them to have addressed all of our technical standards, perhaps they would have needed to bring in outside consultants to help them do that, again. We're, we're sensing that they were trying to limit those costs, so. If this board were wanting to look at its standards, and Liz can walk me through the standards as well in terms of. You know, what they say and how you're supposed to apply them. And give consideration to a a non for, non for profit entity. Looking at the alternative analysis that they have provided. That is what the code. Demands, you know, you have these criteria, they have given information to you. You need to weigh that against what the the merits of the application said.
John, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I mean, I I remember looking at this before, and I don't have the the chart in front of me, but I I think with, because of the layout of the existing. Buildings, uh, that it would be, you know, difficult to have them uh. Uh, you know, comply with the, you know, with the seventy five foot setbacks. Um, and I I don't think this is a situation where it's gonna have a big impact um, in terms of on the wetlands, so. So I'd I'd be in favor of being somewhat flexible.
As I recall visiting the site, uh, the properties to the north and to the south seem to be um. Developed. Into the wetlands. Uh, I did, I was shocked to see your yard the way it was, um, it. It's very much in its natural state, but looking at the neighbors, my recollection, this was last year, was that uh, the property on the north. Was quite developed.
On the north side, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, and on the south side, I don't recall.
Not that far.
But it felt like your project was really a carve out that represented kind of a real historic um, wetlands, as it were. And that the the neighbors had um, built.
The back there has been left as it's always been, so, yeah.
It will be that way.
Remember, that'll remain that way, I mean, beyond the.
Back of the building, we already have a building there, so.
In this changing world, they offer a vital, a important service to our community, to our history.
The building is elevated off the ground?
Up on pilings.
It's connected to the sewer.
Well, is it already connected to the sewer? How would you, is the front building connected to the sewer line?
Yes.
It is, so you would just do a.
Can you do that?
Well, I don't think there's, are there um, bathrooms in these two buildings? I thought they were storage.
No, one's going to be a bathroom.
It's gonna be a handicap accessible um, facility. School tools provide an ejector system to move sewage through the uh, invert. The uh, line going out, school.
I have one question about the bats, I don't know if Brett can answer this, do they nest underground in the? During part of the year, is that?
So just to be, just to be clear.
About the bats?
Just to be clear, the northern longer bats, um, there's no recognition, because this is not public knowledge. Federal government nor state will will tell you where they have documented occurrences of northern longer bats. It simply will give you a range and say if your site is within one and a half miles or three miles of. No long, northern longer bat territory.
You're three miles from my backyard, we have one there.
So, what I would just like to clarify is that. The applicant should be aware that the state will imply, apply to this project, just like any other project that is within three miles. Of northern longer bat occurrences, that they will not be allowed to clear during the restricted window, which is from March first to November thirty. But I do not believe you.
Yeah, of course.
Make any treat down.
We don't need to take any.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking about nesting underground.
I think, Craig, what is it, what is the uh, the V shape?
Why are we suddenly like going, yeah, come on?
Is that the swale that you're?
That's been.
What is?
It's, it's in the yard in fact.
It looks like a rock swale of some sort.
It's a little strong.
Yeah. Oh. They're just old foundation stones that somehow were there, I'm thinking about to do. Um. With, yeah, and and Anykubaboy uh, built a little shed there, she took stones from. And and they're remaining there, I mean, the purists of our societies have told, removed all of it is.
Okay, so that's just.
So the only thing that nests back there are deer, because they can't go next door.
Yeah.
And their pool is further than our house, it's like, both of the pools.
Further what?
Further towards the.
So here's the what, meaning closer to the wetland?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
But they were done a long time ago.
And it's all, of course, it's all vegetation, you know, it's all landscape, yeah.
Well, once the small project.
Well, it's okay, yeah.
Spence line.
That's what I expanded on what I was expressing to the committee.
Mm hmm.
No, say that.
We received this application, which was some time ago now, um, and this is, this is showing that, you know, they didn't just come in here. And we are writing this up quickly, you know, our office did a very.
I'm sorry, we we had like something that was hand drawn, we did not have a survey, am I wrong?
But Mary Ann, everybody submits differently, they, and we've worked with them to get to this point.
And they came in to ask us in which direction should they go.
Right.
Right, so from where we started to where we are now, I think that they've come a long way.
Agreed.
And what I wanted to express to the uh, the committee is that. You know, as part of our review, we did recognize that they should consider alternatives, and to their credit. They did present to you in a written format, their off, their alternatives analysis, they they say. Um, building committee explored alternatives, those alternatives included excavating a basement under the existing house. Um, this would have required building a tanyal approximately four feet inside the parrot, and parallels with the existing footings. Then excavate the soils created full basement space since the house is an historic structure, we decided to scrub, it's risky.
Yeah.
That they want to damage the existing. Another option that was presented was to excavate the front yard, build a deck, and put the archive under that. It was decided that would be prohibitively expensive option, and in addition, it would have meant suspending museum programs for a significant length of time. Um, and then they talk about um, consider attaching to the structure. Um, the location of the the museum property rather than being located elsewhere in the village is necessary for ease of access and transportation. Yes, they also look offsite, you know, and they, can they find another site that'd be more conducive to the space they need to expand to provide this this service?
But these are primarily a storage building, this is primarily?
Archival.
It's an archival.
Will the public have access to it under?
Just have a minute of your time, we have a huge collection of clothing, and so are documents, photographs, paints. And they're all stored as best we can do in archival boxes and paper, but if you're living in a leaky old building. So, you know, to try and raise ourselves up to a museum level, we want to do it right, we want this stuff to be around. Um, so this is the only thing, you know, we're very tiny, uh, we're not the size of Shutter Island, it's a large. Archival facility, I don't think we're gonna ever be that, but we need to restore the freshest things that we have. And so that's what this is all about.
Can you tell me, we have existing total lot coverage. Um, what is that, like somewhat less than sixteen percent, is that what it says? It's so small, fifteen point nine percent?
Uh, fifteen point nine, yes.
Yeah.
And the proposed total lot coverage is now gonna be twenty one point three? And allowed total lot coverage is twenty five? And. What's the purpose of the deck? I mean, it, it seems like there's a lot more lot coverage here than, huh?
It's elevated.
It's elevated, it's elevated, and it's also would be handicap access.
But I thought those were storage, do you need handicap average to?
But we also have a museum, a little whaling, whaling. We've got a whale boat shop, which is a little museum all about the whaling.
Which is back there now.
That's existing.
Yeah.
We're, we're lifting that up and removing it so that we can um, you know, not, because my original plan was to uh, keep the whale boat shop where it was. Slightly on an angle, and then we were going to put the buildings, um, the new building, further down the slope. But at the same level, you know, no, it's still on stilts. So it was kind of like a little fishing, you know, station, but um, that. Required us going even closer to the wetlands, so we compromised and. Removing the building, the existing building, and putting the new one next to it.
But maintaining.
Link of having between them, adding the um, bathroom facility.
And you're maintaining the current uh, distance from the wetlands? That you have now with the so called whaling building?
The whale boat shop is uh, the, is, it's just about exactly the same, maybe even a little further away.
They're shifting it a foot, at least a foot further.
Yeah.
So, um, tell me, I thought that. The thing with like overhangs. That that counts as lot coverage, does it not, you know, we're saying that because these buildings are raised, that they don't count in. Lot coverage, I thought.
No.
They're counting.
They're counting now.
Yeah.
Oh.
They're just making the point that because they're elevated, I think.
They have less impact, I think, because they're elevated.
Less disruption.
There's also a difference, there's a a gross uh, lot coverage, and then you reduce the hardscape or decking. Um, it's a smaller number, but they're below both of those here.
But they still get counted in, the number.
Liz, I mean, could you make the credible argument? Uh, Liz, could you make the credible argument that because this is a community uh, facility? That it does stand separately from, say, a residential project?
Um. I mean, you can make that argument, but it's, it doesn't. It, no, it's, you can't just treat them entirely differently than other applicants before you, you have to apply the standards and owed to the applications. Which Brent is helping me do.
Right, so the one, the first one you.
Relax the setback requirement.
But one of the, one of the items, Brent, that you mentioned was the um.
Community benefit?
The community benefit, this is not a private residence per se.
Yeah, I I was just saying that that is definitely is something that is separating this application from others, where.
Yeah.
There is, it's a site that is historical, and that in order for them to continue to operate here and protect their. Archival materials, they need space, and they considered alternatives to make that happen. And I think that the board just needs to consider those alternatives when it's made the decision.
This is not unlike a project by Otter Pond and a dock, which has public ramifications, it's not just a private um.
Village, also a historic village, these are the backbones of our village.
The proof.
Well, uh, I guess I could ask the question if we're ready to vote on this.
Uh, so tonight's public hearing.
Right.
I think that, you know, if you've heard enough from the applicant and you had your questions answered, you may want to hear from the public.
Mm hmm.
And then based on time, the validity on, you know, facts before you. If you have any more questions, I mean, I'm happy to answer them, you know, a couple of things to take into consideration. You know, there is an existing building here, they're looking to replace it, expand it slightly to accommodate their needs. As their their um, operation is expanding. Um, they are retreating slightly. Um, the one thing I would say is that the the plans are just a little bit lacking of information with regards to that buffer. Yeah, I think that that's something the the harbor committee should to seek to do, is to make sure that you establish the non fertilization, non disturbance fifty foot. Covenant to buffer area.
Will they need a survey for that?
What's that?
Well, they need to get a survey for that?
They would just update the survey. And then the question is, some of the areas that would be in within that fifty foot buffer are clear to have been cleared. Maybe there's a lawn there.
No, there's no lawn in the back.
There's a green, there's a green line right here that.
There's no law there, that's for sure.
Is that a fence?
The D mark needs to be cleared immediately.
I think we should go right here.
Yeah.
It's just a mess, you know, it's a, it's it's wild. Cause you love it.
We love it too.
There's a proposed, there's a proposed picket fence.
Right.
You know, your survey shows.
Oh, oh, that's a project.
I mean.
Proposed project limiting fence.
The way the green.
Silk fence.
Silk, that's temporary fence.
Oh, project limiting.
I worry about the precedent a little bit, but. Right?
About the weather.
I'm worried about the precedent along. I mean, I would love to, I would love to agree, but I'm worried about the precedent.
Advice from your advice and and the committee's advice on what we should do or how we should handle it.
What is this about?
We can take pictures of what's there now and and that basically can see that too.
So the pictures would be helpful. You know, I should, I should, I should go inspect it. You should all go inspect it as well. And then maybe you hold it over to the next meeting. I mean, people may have thought. But I mean, the establishment of a buffer is important. The problem here is if you take a fifty foot buffer and apply it to this site with these buildings where they are, it'd be a foot off of the building. You know, it's a little bit disingenuous. People wouldn't be able to walk around the building. I think that that's.
Well, it doesn't have to be a continuous buffer, right? It could be creeping up the sides of the lot to give some space around the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To work with them and say, you know, give them like a little bit of area around the building and then have them pull the variable width buffer up along the property property boundary lines.
For the same amount of square footage.
That would work probably.
So you need to apply your code where you have been applying other projects. And then you would look at the hardships in terms of, you know, your code variance bacteria to um make your decision.
How do we get the um that information codified on a survey? So we, I.
Someone needs to draw a line and give it to the survey and say this is where we want our variable width buffer to be.
Okay.
Or, you know, you can simply just go to Michael Hammer, who's very knowledgeable of this stuff and say, we need a variable width buffer. I can give you the language.
Okay.
To um satisfy the fifty foot um requirement.
Yeah.
And then it falls on the survey. It shows it as a, you know, so we can held in perpetuity a buffer area. And then when we write the permit, there will be a condition there that speaks to, in order to um hold the buffer to the property, we will, you will submit a covenant, it's a document that, you know, we have, it's a template. You just have to fill out the
Oh, it's a template, okay.
The words, you know, fill in the blanks. And then you'll give that to Liz and the attorney and she'll review it. And and once she says it's okay, then you file that in accounting and it puts the the covenant into place and says that you can't touch this area. You know, it'll be all.
Does this require an analysis of it?
Just an addendum to it.
No, no, we can just add it to the.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, Hammer will do the the line of survey for you with the calculations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you'll just do the document separately after the permits issue.
Okay, so it's conceivable. We can add it for you next.
Yeah.
Yeah, Hammer should be able to do that survey of it for you really quickly.
Yeah.
And have submit that back to us right away.
Yeah.
And then.
If you could just issue a memo on the wording that we should give to the hand.
Yeah. I'll, I'll get your email addresses and I'll talk to you.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Great. Uh, can we, is it all right to ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to, okay. Thank you both very much. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this project?
Anybody online?
Anybody online?
No, he's reasoning him online.
Right.
So do you want to motion to table this tonight?
Yeah, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to table this until the um April meeting, April fourth.
And for Brett to send a memo about the.
Yeah.
Is she gonna prepare a resolution or?
Well, here's what's gonna happen. We, um, we should, everybody should be familiar with the site. Um, but Brent can make a um a note to uh Michael Hammer to affect that curvilinear um buffer. Have that submitted, have that ready. Whenever that's ready, then they can present.
Do we have a planting plan? I'm looking at you. You're usually the one who.
There's nothing that goes. He should go back there. It looks like the disentwistled swamp. It looks like the disentwistled swamp down there.
Already.
Yeah.
They should.
If it needs to be.
That's the beauty of it being elevated is that it's just in its natural state.
Which is nice.
It's a real time.
I see where you're coming from, like your.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Uh, we haven't, we haven't made the motion.
I will.
It's my. I did, but then I realized I was in error. So it's hovering.
The only first back there, take a peek and chat these guys.
Right.
I'll go, I'll go there. I'm across the street.
I mean, if it's a bunch of invasive stuff, do we don't like um have them like redo it? I mean, that's.
There could be skunk cabbage on.
Well, why don't you take a look at it?
Take a look.
Brent, did you look at the nature of the vegetation that's there now? Is it a lot of invasive stuff? Is it stuff that we would like to have redone or are you happy with what's there?
I'm going to do a site inspection because.
It's kind of snowdrops right now.
Well, those are lovely, but there may be a few other items. Yeah.
I don't know what the weeds are on the right. A lot of them.
Okay.
Things will be popping up in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so.
Uh, so do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion table until the next meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
So.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. You'd like it.
Good luck.
And look, it's six o'clock.
Wow.
Perfect chance.
Okay, so um we are going to move on to the presentation by Dr. Goldler, and I'd like to have Mary Ann give a little introduction.
Um, right. So Chris, come on up. Um, Chris Goldler is a distinguished professor. He's the endowed chair of coastal ecology and conservation at the School of Marine and Atmospheric Sciences at Stony Brook. And he's also the director of the New York State Center for Clean Water Technology. I think it was probably eight years ago that you made your first presentation here, which was a proposal to the village board that we start doing some water testing. And it kind of took us two years to figure out how we were going to finance that. I see people here from the Sag Harbor Yacht Club, and they were very critical in getting that first proposal across the um the start line. So I look forward to your presentation tonight. It's always interesting, always surprising and usually entertaining. So.
Isn't that, I have me an IT person here with you?
Carrie.
And Chi.
Okay, I've got my laptop and I've got a thumb drive.
Okay, so.
If we're running from here.
If you get your laptop up there.
Yeah, right.
The, he's in Dow, is that?
Huh?
In Dow, is that?
Yeah. Endowed chair. He needs like somebody to get from you. You know, it's kind of. So are they on the discussion?
Who's that?
Sag Harbor Yacht.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are gate issues.
Grind them down.
Are we gonna be able to look on John's screen here?
I think that's what they're.
Yeah, that's what they're trying to do.
Yeah, you see.
I think so. We can see John's.
See.
Doing this very seriously.
Looks horrible.
Looks like it's only a devil island, right?
Okay, let the audience.
No, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Oh, that looks good.
There we go. Wow.
Careful, yeah, man, be careful there.
So. So wait, we can't see them.
No, we have to go out there.
Yeah, we have to go.
Mix up, mix it up a little bit.
It's great, it's great online, great view online for.
It's John's.
Thanks, John.
It's a lot.
Yeah. Why don't you have somebody? I can get it started.
Yeah, maybe just. I don't.
I think that's a good turn.
There you go.
Okay. I said it even went back to, okay. No, it's around, maybe.
Yeah.
It's unreal.
You just kind of have to talk pretty loudly so the microphone picture up high.
That's it, right? Okay, great.
Good point.
Yeah. Okay, well, uh, thank you, um. Everyone, thank you for coming. Thank you for the enthusiasm, thank you for the support. And uh, thank you for the instructions. And um, thank you for things going on here. Right, so just as background, you know, I think a central premise for this presentation is thinking about, you know, all of Sag Harbor reservoir cabin. Um, and the recognition that all the water landing on a rainy day like today, anywhere in the harbor is going to, of the village, um, is going to be uh either end up as groundwater or in other cases, surface runoff. And precisely what happens where is wholly dependent on, you know, where that is. So you can imagine the areas that are paved like Main Street and surrounding areas. It's a big funnel that comes down um to where the harbor is. And so there's been some direct runoff there. Uh, and in other cases, things go to groundwater first. And the difference there is tremendous, I'll just mention, in that when water goes to ground, bacteria are generally removed, but nitrogen isn't. Um, but when water is running off directly, um, runoff goes directly into water, you're you're not removing bacteria or nitrogen. Uh, but nitrogen levels and runoff are generally lower. So you've got, just as a review, then runoff tends to be a strong source of bacteria, but not nitrogen. Groundwater tends to be a strong source of nitrogen, but not bacteria. Um, on the nitrogen front, uh, studies over the last several decades, you know, or at least the last decade, have really nailed down the idea that most of the nitrogen entering surface waters is coming from onsite wastewater primarily. And then secondarily from fertilizer. Um, and as the flow pattern show here, the main root of that nitrogen is via groundwater flow. But the most important thing is that it's coming from wastewater. And, you know, every year my lab does work here in Sag Harbor, but we're really looking all over Long Island. Uh, and so, you know, once we hit May, we're sampling thirty plus sites um in marine waters as well as fresh waters. And so this map here just gives you a sense of widespread problems across Long Island associated with nitrogen overload. These are different types of harmful algal blooms and low oxygen zones. And this is only from twenty twenty three. So it's between April of twenty twenty three going to September. Um, and you can see a very widespread pattern um of harmful algal blooms and low oxygen. Um, and I don't know if you can pull out the nuances here. I won't walk you through them, but I'll suffice to say the areas that are sewed then have a lot fewer of these problems. So for example, Nassau County with a lot fewer of these events than um Suffolk County and Western Suffolk County, which is sewers and stuff with sewer district, particularly the southern part of Western Suffolk County with a lot fewer of these events uh than Eastern Long Island, where we're almost entirely unsewered, save for a few areas. Okay, um, and so harmful algal blooms, we'll talk about those. Um, are events where you have the growth of one algal species to a level where you actually have a negative impact on human health or ecosystem. Um, and then the other big thing we'll talk about today are fecal bacteria. They can come from many sources. Uh, they can get into surface waters. In that case, they can contaminate shellfish, an issue with human health. Uh, or direct contact from swimming can also be an issue. And a lot of these pathogens are delivered physically via surface runoff. Uh, like I said, when when the pathogens get into the ground, they are tend to be retained within sand. Um, and then within an ecosystem, you can have what you could call natural sources. So that would be maybe like birds. Uh, or you could get unnatural sources as well. But maybe what we call anthropogenic, where you could have human derived wastewater or from dogs or often small mammals as well. Since we'll focus on fecal coliform bacteria, um, and enterococcus has two types of bacteria that we measure. Uh, I just want to highlight those. We measure those too because those are the standards by which shellfishing and swimming are judged by the DEC and the DOH respectively. Uh, and so the DOH will tell you if there's above a hundred and four colonies per um hundred mils of water, there shouldn't be any swimming. Uh, and DEC would say if the average.
We lose sound?
Hopefully not. I don't think I'm muted. But I can admit.
Can you hear now, John?
Yes, I can hear now.
Great. Um, DEC does widespread testing for specifically for fecal coliform bacteria, uh, for shellfishing and seasonally Suffolk County testing uh on beaches as well. Uh, and just to give the lay of the land, these are the areas with regards to shellfishing that are open and closed to shellfishing. You can see everywhere in the inner harbor, uh, is largely closed to shellfishing. Um, as is the region in the um, the back part of the the lower part of Sag Harbor Cove. Uh, and then that area coming out of Little Northwest Creek are also closed. Um, but for purposes we'll talk about later, between Little Northwest Creek and the inner harbor is cave and beach that's open uh for both shellfishing and for swimming. Okay, and so beyond measuring those general bacteria, we use a molecular approach, a DNA-based approach to try to understand where those bacteria are coming from. So that is to say, if you see high levels of bacteria, all that tells you, and it just gives the regulatory regulatory entities the power to or the information to say, yeah, good for swimming, not good for swimming, same for shellfishing. Uh, but you can't do anything if you just know the levels are high, if you don't know where it's coming from. So this approach looks at actually the gut microbiome bacteria of these different animals. I'm sure we've all heard of the microbiome in the last several years become clear that it affects human health. Um, and as it turns out, the bacteria that inhabit the guts of different animals differ. And so these are DNA-based approaches to target specific bacteria. to target specific bacteria that are specific to the animals here. We have a target for dogs, for humans, for birds, and for deer. Uh, the target for dogs, uh, it, it turns out the dog microbiome shares some similarities to the, those you might find in some other small mammals. Um, some things like rodents, for example. Um, and, and so we call it dog, but we also call it dog slash small mammal. Okay, and so we haven't doing this for quite a few years. There have been water quality impairments, just to review briefly. Um, in marine waters, we've seen high nitrogen, low oxygen, low water clarity, algal blooms, and fecal bacteria. Uh, we've shown that nitrogen can promote, uh, algae in these water bodies. Um, we've shown that in previous work that septic systems are the primary source of nitrogen to both Sag Harbor Cove and Sag Harbors, we sort of split those two things up. Um, so despite the fact that this is a treatment plant here, it's only a small contributor, um, and actually removes a lot of the nutrients, it turns out. Um, and yeah, I mean, that, that finer point in the inner harbor, we have seen some human, um, related inner, inner part, uh, fecal bacteria and other places, it's been largely dogs, small mammals, and broods. So for twenty twenty-three, we had essentially what I, essentially two focus areas with a couple of other, uh, things thrown in. But, you know, one focus area was on Haven's Beach. Uh, and so in the past, we've always focused on the sump in front of it, behind Haven's Beach. Uh, we've definitely shown that that sump is enriched in bacteria. So the focus more in twenty twenty-three was understanding what's happening on the bathing beach itself. Um, another area we focused on is Windmill Beach. Again, that's an area specifically Windmill Beach that in the past has had problems with bacteria. Uh, and so we did both a spatial sample on the right to better understand where that, the, um, contamination might be coming from. Uh, and then we also just did some general water quality monitoring for both Sag Harbor and Sag Harbor Cove and some mapping of that water quality as well. So to look at the twenty twenty-three seasons, specifically the sort of months we sampled, um, the upper panel there gives you a sense of temperatures, uh, actually over a twenty-four hour, um, period. Uh, and specifically then also looks at rainfall. Um, and so just to summarize it all, uh, we had a cool spring, actually kind of a cool June, a very hot July, um, and a modestly warm, um, August, uh, and maybe really September. Uh, on the rainfall front, and in average, um, month, we should get four inches of rainfall, that's year round. Um, so we started the season with not a lot of rain and we had a very heavy, uh, some very heavy rainfall events during July and August. Um, and I don't know if you remember back to last summer, but you know, these were like tropical, tropical deluges. And so, you know, with, um, at least one event there in July and one in August, bringing in three to four inches of rain, just in one event. And that's how much you should get in a month. Uh, and that's important because those events can, um, you know, saturate the ground. Um, and then actually in cases where the, you should get flow into groundwater, if the ground is saturated with water, then you actually can get even more runoff just directly into water pockets. Um, and so breaking out the areas that we did the study of in the upper right, we had three stations we looked at in Haven's Beach. Uh, and then within Sag Harbor itself and the cove, you can see we had a focus in Windmill Beach and then from there we worked, uh, north along the wharf. Um, along, long wharf there, and then also we had stations going up, um, to the west as well. And we also did some, uh, testing of the sewer treatment plant as well also. So I'm just gonna start with the, uh, Sag Harbor and Sag Harbor Cove locations. Um, and we, about midway through sampling, maybe a little bit less than that, we, in addition to sampling Windmill Beach itself, began getting samples from the outfall pipe of Windmill Beach. Um, so just as a warm up here, just gonna look at some surface water temperatures. Nothing too exciting to show here, falls the trend that I mentioned. It got really hot really fast in July and thereafter, it's sort of a modest, uh, summer, nothing too warm. And you can see that warmer station is the one for us back within Sag Harbor Cove. Uh, and here's continuous monitoring of temperature and showing essentially that same trend, uh, with peaks getting towards thirty degrees centigrade both in July and, well, I guess exclusively in July. Um, salinity levels that, uh, you can see here are, um, hanging around twenty-nine or so. Again, that innermost part, the Amherst Cove Station had the, that little drop that probably associated with the freshwater event. The next closest station there at Cove Road also had that. So again, and that aligning with when we had, uh, a heavy rainfall event. And again, the very heavy rains from mid-July going into mid or through August probably what led to those dropping levels of salinity, uh, in the region in general. On the daytime oxygen measurements, which are shown here, uh, all the levels were good. I put in the standard here that the E C has for oxygen and, um, you know, you make a measurement during the day and it's all good news. Um, but as maybe you've heard me talk about in the past, um, when you make day-night measurements, you don't always get good news. And so that is at night, the levels can sag and drop. And that's what we saw, starting out with just fine levels and then later in the summer having levels that would be maybe high during the day, but then dropping down at night. We've seen this in the past. Um, we also measured water clarity. Now, we often can't do this in many places, we sample, the water's not deep enough. But in this particular area, essentially it was just a run from Sag Harbor Cove, uh, through Long Wharf. And what you can see is that, you know, this is okay water clarity. You really want to have two meters or more. The fact that it's lower than that probably su- suggests there's some sort of trebitty in the water. If you want seagrass to grow, you need about two meters of water clarity. Uh, so this is just saying, you know, this inner part of the cove, uh, and the harbor is not going to be great for that. And again, probably associated with levels of algae. Uh, and that's shown here, just levels of phytoplankton. Um, NO or EPA would tell you, you should never have levels above twenty micrograms per liter. Essentially, we didn't. In most cases, it was lower than that with the exception of a, an event in July. Um, the levels were, you know, modest. Five is a good number, so we're sort of hovering somewhere in between there. Um, now, there actually is very good news for last year with comes some harmful algal blooms. We monitored three different, four, three different types of harmful algal blooms. Um, and actually the levels were very low. There's not actually a lot of data. The, the report at one will show the actual numbers, but the, 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 the arpathy were present, but not at levels that were concerned. That was good news. Um, I showed this data last year, but just as a reminder, we've been getting, and because this is a continuing project, we do have support for the Pecan Gastro partnership to do, uh, have a specific focus on Sag Harbor and Sag Harbor Cove, specifically to understand the relationship between nutrient inputs and algae and harmful algae. Um, and I should just say, you all actually should be commended for that because it's actually the, uh, activeness of the village that had the Pecan Gastro program when I went to pick, you know, where should I do this study? And Sag Harbor came to the front of the list because of, um, you know, I don't know what you all do with Pecan Gastro partnership, but George Novak believes that you're very active, uh, and very responsive, uh, and a, you know, it's all about partnership. And she believes you guys are great partners. So she pointed me towards Sag Harbor, um, to look at this specifically. So we did, these are very simple bioassays, uh, where we're essentially collecting water from Sag Harbor Cove and then amending it with either nitrogen in the yellow, phosphorus in the green, or both compounds in the orange. Um, and so you can see these are experiments once a week, May through June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and what you see in every single case, just about, uh, you get more biomass when you add more nitrogen. Uh, and you could maybe get an additionally enhanced effect from nitrogen and phosphorus. But phosphorus on some doing nothing, just really affirming that it's nitrogen that's driving, uh, the algal communities here. Um, and we also did this experiment specifically looking when there was Alexandria in the water. This is one of the toxic algal blooms that we worry about the most. And, um, I had another animation ever. You can see that the levels of Alexandria, uh, increasing, getting towards almost more than doubling, uh, with the addition of nitrogen. So again, it's not just increasing all the algae, but it can increase this harmful algae as well. Um, we measured nitrogen levels last year and, um, you know, by the standard of the Pecan Gastro program, the levels in the water are too high. Uh, and that's just what this shows here. You can see the stations, Windmill Beach, um, Sag Harbor Cove, Amherst Cove, Cove Road. These are all going backwards into Sag Harbor Cove. And, you know, ideally, the total amount of nitrogen in the water would be point four milligrams per liter or lower. Uh, and so what you see is that all these stations are above that. Um, you can see late in the season, we started sampling, uh, the outfall pipe by Windmill Beach. And you can see that's even higher in nitrogen. So it's definitely a source, there are stronger sources out there. Um, you know, I think that maybe I'll, we're gonna show that or not. But the beacon vault last year, for example, also had very high levels. Uh, and these are the average levels through the season. And again, um, you know, three of the four marine sites being on average higher than that point four milligrams per liter. Um, we sent out our, um, autonomous vehicle, uh, to map, uh, Sag Harbor Cove and Sag Harbor, uh, late in the summer. And I'll just show some of those maps here. Um, and they show a trend that, you know, generally you'd expect, but important to recognize. So these are, uh, heat maps, so in all cases, high levels will be red, uh, and low levels will be blue, maybe in some cases they're reversed if you want the, for oxygen, but I, I'll just walk through it. Um, and so what you see here is temperatures in the back part of the cove being significantly warmer, uh, than the harbor, and that totally makes sense. The water's back there for a longer period of time and essentially just, um, heating up, you know? And with regards to salinity here, you can see the reverse pattern as expected. Uh, but in this, here you really see the, the input of fresh water specifically from Otter Pond. Uh, and I forget what that creek is called, but both of those two creeks in the back part of the, uh, the cove, all though showing up with significantly lower salinity, uh, than you find in the other regions. Um, dissolved oxygen in this particular case are all high levels. So you could, we can talk through the trends, none of these levels are concerning though. Um, you know, the, the levels are slightly higher in the back part of the cove, that one particular region. And that's probably associated with, uh, oh, those areas also with higher pH. Uh, and that's probably associated with the fact that there's slightly elevated, uh, chlorophyll in that area. It's a little bit of an offset. Um, but you can see the highest levels of chlorophyll also found in the back part of the cove. Um, this is something that we weren't supposed to do this past year and we didn't. But it's actually data we had from a few years back, I just, I share it. This is actually, I believe, twenty nineteen data. We used it to make our nitrogen budgets. Uh, but we never actually presented what the actual findings were. So this is just, in this case, it's a qualitative survey of the sediment types, uh, from the inner harbor all the way going back into the cove. Um, and so what you see definitely in the back part of the cove, you primarily have, what we classify as black mud. Um, so that's finer grain sediment in the back. Um, whereas if you work out more towards the, uh, the harbor itself and the upper part of Sag Harbor Cove, it's more a mix of, um, of sand and mud that you can see some spatial, uh, heterogeneity there as well. Uh, this is even harder to derive, but essentially it's just showing how thick the mud is. Uh, and essentially just showing that the further back you go, the thicker, not only the mud there, but that mud gets pretty thick. Um, and that ends up being actually, you know, itself, that thick mud can be a source of nutrients and can also pull oxygen out of the water, um, at night. Okay, so I showed the rainfall data and I just wanted to pull that up again, just to, because we're now going to go into, um, bacterial densities. And again, just emphasizing some pretty major events we had in mid-July or so, and certainly in the first half of August. So these are fecal bacterial numbers and, um, what I have first is a dash line, which is the fourteen colony forming units per hundred milliliters, which would be the shellfishing standard. Um, and then we have the different stations from Windmill Beach through Long Wharf, so it's going north. And then you could also think from Windmill Beach, it would be Sag Harbor Cove, going back then to Amherst Cove and then Cove Road. Amherst Road and Cove Road. Uh, and then throw it in there, again, I had students make these figures, I didn't. The last request I had didn't get in there, I had why they had the Windmill Beach outfall pipe next to Windmill Beach. But it is physically next to Windmill Beach. Uh, and so what it shows is that, that outfall pipe, um, consistent with what we found for other outfall pipes, very enriched in bacteria. Right, and you can see the high levels at Windmill Beach. Uh, and, you know, they, they generally tail off thereafter. Well, I act like they do tail off, because I'm looking at, let's just see. Oh, yeah, so they, 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 no, there's some mitigation thereafter. You can see some spikes, but essentially high levels at the outfall pipe. Um, and then high levels at Windmill Beach. And, you know, the levels thereafter are somewhat similar, but getting lower as you go back into the cove. Right, so that's just suggesting that at this confluence point at Windmill Beach outfall, that's where you have a strong source of bacterias. Um, and, you know, this is, I'm gonna show a few slides in this, so just, um, oops, yeah. And so from that wharf area, you can see it decreases back to the, within the cove. Um, this is Enterococcus, this is a type of bacteria that's used for, uh, detecting swimming and it's a little bit more sensitive on bacteria. Again, same general pattern, that outfall pipe very enriched. Uh, here I'm indicating the numbers, percentage of samples that are over the limit. So, um, eighty percent of those out of the outfall pipe over. Not surprising, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a common type of an outfall pipe. Um, and forty percent of them over at Windmill Beach. Um, and then that one side, Amherst Cove, uh, had also three gains that were above as well. And this is last year's data, but just as a reminder, sort of a similar scenario where that beacon vault, um, almost every time we sampled it, it was high in fecal coliform bacteria, uh, and often and typically high in Enterococcus as well. The N A means that we just didn't get a sample. Uh, so that runoff, and, and, you know, as you, again, as you think about the layout of the village, some of this kind of makes sense. Like I said, when we're out of a village, you know, it rains and everything goes into the ground. But once you get down towards the village and the wind is all just along, right? You've got, everything is sloping down to that inner harbor. Uh, and a lot of that is just simply hay and it's going in through there and all shunting out, uh, and collecting stuff, stuff along the way. Um, so the question now, where are these, um, bacteria coming from? And so we did do the microbial source tracking. And actually, this is really, in my mind, a very, uh, nice and clean dataset. Um, so it shows, um, in this case, you're, we're adding up the bacteria from the different groups. And obviously the deer levels this year were super, super low. Maybe not a surprise, I don't know how many deer are running around the village.
Oh, I don't know.
No, really? Okay, well, um, they, it's in there, but you can barely see it. Um, so this is somewhat consistent with prior years. And again, when you see strong, high levels at the outfall pipe and then decreasing, and then, you know, a little bit different for the, for this source that you see, um, other types of bacteria, different types showing up as you move into the cove. But if I show it, and so this is absolute abundances. It's a little bit easier and even more striking trend in my eyes when you look at relative abundances. Right, so what this is telling you firstly is what's coming out of the outfall pipe is really dog derived, right? And maybe small animal mixed in. Um, but then this very interesting trend as you move towards Sag Harbor Cove and I should say our Sag Harbor Cove site is the ship, a ship, a shore marina. And as you move into the wharf, what you're seeing is more and more of that human bacterial signal. Right, so it essentially show what this, the way I, and then when you move back into the cove, you get the strongest bird signal. Now, yeah, bird signal just means there's a lot of birds around. Uh, but, you know, the way I interpret this is that you're getting a dog-related runoff coming in through that outfall pipe. But as you move into the harbor, that human signal just says there, and we've seen this, you know, all the, nearly every year and certainly in East Hampton as well, um, that there is vessel discharge. And you do get vessel discharge as bacteria as well. And that's clearly showing up. Now, in happy news, if you want to call it happy news, um, when it comes to the abundance of bacteria, it's far lower. Right, the higher levels of bacteria are really coming out of, uh, that outfall pipe. But with, and, and it gives, that just gives you, then just follow, for example, if you follow that green bar, you can just see it getting diluted as you move through. Um, but as a relative abundance, in addition to that dilution, the dog signal, you've got that replaced by the human signal. Um, so, you know, obviously it's, it's, it's a complex situation. You've got two different, and this, I think, I feel this is like kind of the cleanest picture we've had yet to show that, you know, there's, it's not one place to point, there's actually two things going, there's runoff. And, and, and through by a. There's actually two things going, there's runoff and 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 through by a concentration amount, that's the greatest one. Uh but there is vessel discharge as well. Um and you know, there could be an argument to that. There's not enough science behind it, some people might say that the back, the human-derived bacteria are probably the most concerned. Cause the question would be, heck, do the animal, how much, what's the risk relative to an animal-derived uh fecal bacteria versus a human-derived? And um you know, there's no distinction in the year when it comes to the regulations. But the human ones would certainly have the greatest potential for causing infections and problems. Okay, um so now moving over to Haven's Beach, this is, I'm not, we did not sample the sump this particular year, but this image I had available and was um, I just wanted to show as a reminder. There's this long uh sump that does receive some runoff, uh and then. We'll see a little bit better here, a little blurry, but does runoff then onto the beach. And uh we had three sampling sites this year, one directly to runoff and then one in the west and east side of the beach. Uh and just to show you even more close up, the um the culverts that uh convey that runoff are shown in the lower left. Uh and you can see, this is just like a Google Earth image, uh you know, at the right time, you actually can see the runoff going from that culvert actually out into the beach. Um so just the basic stuff, the salinity, again, like the places dropping through the season with all that rainfall, oxygen levels were great. Chlorophyll levels weren't too bad. Um total nitrogen levels, likely locations were high, uh on many occasions too high, um so that's something to think about. Um but the big thing we wanted to look at are bacteria. So here's the fecal bacterium, um and the important thing here is that we're seeing exceedances that aren't necessarily, you know, directly during the high rainfall, some of these are. Um and so you can see if it all all, overall, about forty percent of the time, uh the levels were above what would be the D E C standard for a monthly meeting. And for Enterococcus, now, this is obviously not great, I mean, this is a swimming beach. And um so here, half of the time, half of the samples collected, uh and the right in the middle part of these were over the limit for the, by the DOH. Uh and somewhere between forty percent to the east and twenty-five percent uh to the west being over the limit. Um when it came to swimming. And 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 the fact that you had more over to the east than to the west, you know, we had thought at times, well, maybe it's some other runoff coming from the west. Uh the fact that that's not the case just does suggest that it's it's coming out and going to the east and it's, you don't have it sourced to the west. So just pointing at the likely, you know, is that sump. Um consistent with some, with prior years, um you know, firstly, looking at the first one, the mid one, that's gonna be directly everything coming out of the sump, almost all. Um uh dog derived with a little bit of a bird signal, a little bit of a eagle signal. Then once you get out into the waters, uh you have the stronger uh the persistence of that dog and small mammals. But again, here, there are the same levels of, the trends are reversed, it hires the west and lowers the east. Uh and that's not necessarily surprising as your different assays targeting different bacteria. And you just look at its total percentage, you can see, well, it's mainly dogs and small mammals. Okay, and then I just, you wanna just point out, you know, sometimes you can just say, oh, it's fecal bacteria. But last year was a little bit of a wake-up call when it comes to bacteria. Um you know, people talk about Vibrio all the time and there's many, many species of Vibrio out there. Um I'm just listing the name here on the way over, sort of Vibrio cholera, for example, I mean, outbreak of Vibrio cholera. In Haiti, they have the same worries, for example, in Gaza right now. Um but Vibrio vulnificus is sort of a little bit different. This is personally, it's a tropical bacteria. Uh and it's been in the past called a flesh-eating bacteria. And you know, the the grand irony, or a grand irony, or one irony is that in the spring of twenty twenty-three, there was a prominent paper that came out that showed the progressive migration of Vibrio vulnificus. It was only in the Gulf at the end of the twentieth century. There had been outbreaks, you know, places like Louisiana, Alabama, Florida. You know, if you follow the news, you hear these stories during the summer. But then the interesting is, in this century, it sort of has crept up the coastline. The irony, or maybe even humorous part, is that there was a study that came out in April of twenty twenty-three. And it said, well, if the climate changes, you know, it it looked at middle of the twenty-first century and end of the twenty-first century. And they also looked at two different fossil fuel emission approaches. Essentially, we're trying to say, when will it, when will Vibrio vulnificus essentially reach New York and New England? And the answer was, if we don't control fossil fuels by the end of the twentieth century, only by the end twenty, twenty-eighties, and then it'll hit New York and New England. And um well, that paper was good for about, I guess it was four months. Because in in August last year, there were outbreaks, um um Vibrio vulnificus, people died in Long Island, Xander. And you know, I just, will just say, this is not a medical doctor. And uh but I'll also say, the medical doctors around here weren't prepared for this and hadn't been looking for this. The C E C, that second part, first part is actually obviously New York Child's Hospital, but the second, two-thirds there is from the C B C. C E C sends out alerts across the nation when there are a new health risk that people, that doctors need to be aware of. So this isn't from the public, this is goes to doctors. Um so this was sent out, you can see that it was on September first last, um of last year, that the C E C sent this out to doctors saying, be on the lookout uh for severe Vibrio vulnificus infections uh associated with warming water. And you know, that's what we had here. Um you know, my state of the business address um is next week on Wednesday at seven. So I'm gonna talk more about this, but I'll just say, so we had the outbreaks, people died, both through infections and through consuming oysters. And you know, and therefore, the organism is around, I'll just say that. And so, you know, I can't say anything about what's coming in with the runoff, but these are the, these are the reasons people worry about this sorts of bacteria. Um, okay, and then just thinking again about, um, this is partly humorous, of course. Um but going back to two thousand eight, we knew, even back then, I had done a study of the same uh area of Haven's Beach, where here, we weren't looking at fecal coliform, but what are called total coliform bacteria. Uh but saw high levels in the sump and high levels out in the receiving waters as well. Um and saw, so and also these results are consistent with the last several years, so we've got a pretty good case to make. I will say that I'm having, um in conversation with people in New York City Center for Clean Water Technology. Um I see Brad is here from Dulcet Park in Fort Hays. And so we have some ideas about how to address this, and it's, it's obviously, it's high time and I think um. Um yeah, so maybe we'll talk.
Always.
And uh yeah, great, and so, and maybe I can get some of the people at the center because um, yeah, it's it's time. And so specifically targeting um the East Hampton C P F R F E that'll come out uh in August. So it's a little ways off, but that's good, cause it gives us time, I think so. Uh but I think it's in, you know, we clearly can make the case that this is an important issue. Um just wrapping up towards the end here and to talk about the sewer treatment plant. Um this is mainly a very, or almost exclusively, a happy and good news story. Um the levels of nitrogen discharge at the sewer treatment plant continue to be really, really low, right? So like, you know, in some cases, two milligrams per liter, like, so the best home system, the best one you can get is gonna do ten. Right, so this is, you can see, it's coming out at like somewhere between eight and two. Um so very, very low, the standard for onsite systems is nineteen. Um a normal sewer treatment plant might do ten, and that's one that's removing nitrogen. So this is like much better than your average sewer treatment plant. And this would have been a surprise, we've shown this before, right? So it continues to perform very, very well. Um and suggests that, you know, if there's the opportunity to hook up, to expand the capacity, um that would be a good idea. That would help, uh you know, address the nitrogen situation um further without, and and bring it down to very, very low levels, better than you could do with the onsite systems. Um and on the bacteria front, I mean, no, recognize, this is the bacteria in the shell, the water coming right out of the plant. Um so these are very, very low levels. Um even though they're above that standard, no one's collecting shellfish, you know, from the outfall pipe or from the discharge site of the um of the plant. And 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 these levels in most cases are lower than what you find actually in the harbor. So it may well be that, it, not even may well be, it is the case of it's cleaning up the harbor of the discharges, uh diluting out the bacteria that are there. And you know, I'd raise your hand if you wanna swim in the effluent for the sewer treatment plant, I'm probably nobody, no, that's what you could. That's how clean it is, you can go swimming uh in that effluent. And you know, thankfully, our assay is working, almost all the bacteria coming out from there are human. Um and again, this this detects DNA fragments, not live bacteria. So this, the data here is exactly what you expect, it's almost all human-related bacteria coming out. Um yeah, so that's the data, so just thinking about management options. Um you know, again, we know nitrogen is the uh big culprit for a lot of the water power impairments. Um and we, prior studies have shown that most of the nitrogen is coming from onsite septic systems. So either upgrading those systems or generating homes, there's sewer treatment plant, you know, are ways to address that. Um and obviously, you know, understanding the the costs for, you know, extending sewer lines is not cheap. Um you do have gravity working for you, but I think that's being addressed, is that right, Ben? The people are looking into sewer and connecting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um so that's a great option. And again, but another place, eventually you'll get to a distance where, you know, that won't make sense and so onsite systems will be a better, better option. And there's plenty of good onsite systems out there. Um I also, at the university, direct New York City Center for Clean Water Technology, where we've been uh trying our hand in in these uh um onsite septic systems, I shouldn't say trying our hand. We've developed uh systems as well, they're very, very simple, our nitrogen-removing biofilter uses grain fields, which is used almost everywhere else except Suffolk County. And underlays that with layers of sand and sand mixed with wood chips um to promote nitrification and denitrification. And uh the red bar, all these bars show the discharge in different systems that have been tested in Suffolk County. Um we have three types of those nitrogen-removing biofilters, those N R Bs, and one of them is the best performing one in all Suffolk County. Um and that one in particular also has been shown to remove more than two dozen different drugs and pharmaceuticals and personal care products. The removal percentages here are better than sewer treatment plants. Um so, so we, good job there. Um and they've been approved, they lined um nitrogen-removing biofilter has provisional approval now from Suffolk County for installation uh and eligibility for grants as well. And if people are interested in that, I can get people from the center to talk to you and help you on this install. Um and then thinking about things further, like uh Haven's Beach, I mean, obviously mitigating that runoff from the sump, you know, has to be our priority. Um and like I said, there's a few ideas that we're kicking around and have to talk to people about how that might go. Um but it's also, like I said, because of the, sort of the flow that you get at the low point uh in the harbor there, uh runoff just in the village in general is an issue. Um and so mitigating that in some way um is important, it's clearly a source of bacteria uh going to Windmill Beach. Um and then vessels are also clearly a source of bacteria. Um and so, you know, the, I don't know, um how, I don't know who swims at Windmill Beach. Um and and people do it all, but you know, certainly, the idea of uh having at least rainfall on these closures of the beach made sense. We definitely saw, uh like I said, about half of the time, the the levels were just too high for swimming. Um so just wrapping things up then, um you know, I don't know how you all took the news here today, but overall, the water quality is pretty good uh in twenty twenty-three, and particularly with the absence of harmful algal blooms. Um we did have some low oxygen, some, obviously, the bacterial issue continues. Uh back, the uh southern Haven's Beach is a problem for Haven's Beach, uh that needs to be mitigated. Um you know, somehow dealing with the runoff from other sites like the beacon site and the windmill beach outfall, um it's gonna be needed to address those bacteria. Uh and then, you know, upgrading septic systems or getting on that sewer treatment plant will also work towards mitigating a lot of the water problems. Um and through it all, you know, continued monitoring will help us understand where we are and things. Um so with that, I will uh definitely acknowledge Mary Anna, you know, she's definitely um the partner in all of this. And so she's helping uh making sure the samples are in the right place at the right time and thinking through these issues. So she deserves, you know, all the credit for actually founding this whole effort uh and continuing the support and helping us guide us through what to look at and to look at with a finer tooth comb. And I think it's been, uh yeah, it's been very useful. So I'm very thankful to the committee for their support, their patience and all the people who support the project, East Hampton Town, Southampton Town, trustees, builders, et cetera. Um and all the good people in the lab, my lab, who um you know, worked hard to get this report done. Um and thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
See you. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is the question, so especially looking at Amherst and less, to a lesser extent, Cove. But it seems like that would be an area where rain gardens would really be helpful, what did you think?
Yeah, absolutely, I think rain gardens are are a great solution. I mean, the bottom line is, the thing to avoid is water running directly into surface waters.
Right.
Right, and so, and again, you know, you can, here's, here's the way I often think about it. There are private wells on these, on our, right, even here in the village. If you have a private well, you can also have a receptive system on the same property and you only need to separate them by a hundred feet. Now think about it, on one hand, that's insane, but it's not insane because bacteria get retained in the sand. So anytime you can run water through sand or through some kind of sediment, you've enhanced the capability of pulling out and preventing the bacteria from washing the surface waters. Again, if you get like an extreme dilute, you're gonna get overflow. Um you know, in a rain garden with vegetation, you have the added benefit of potentially the nutrients being assimilated by the plants. Um but yeah, the the basic guiding principle is that water that goes directly into surface waters is gonna contaminate with bacteria. It's probably very hard to avoid, uh and what you really want is that water running through sand.
A second question, when you talk about the Windmill Beach outfall, first of all, you say who swims there? Nobody swims there, but that's where people took their littlest kids, because it's safe, it's protected.
Right.
And you see like toddlers and little kids playing around the edge of the water.
Mm.
So I I think we have to be concerned about that, people aren't going in there and swimming out to a raft. But it's people like, you know, um visitors, yeah, and visitors, exactly.
Yeah.
Um but when we talked about the outfall, I think what we did is we went in through the manhole and we actually tested directly from the pipe that was coming all the way down from the library through Main Street, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it wasn't like we were going out there in the water and testing.
No, it's what's coming out of there, yeah. Yeah.
At what point does Enterococcus will become a real health threat? At what value? I know, I think it's one oh four or something.
Yeah, exactly, that's the E C.
Is that really, uh when it becomes a health threat?
Well, I mean, you know, um all of these standards and regulations are built to be conservative, right? And so, you know, I'm not a doctor and I don't make these rules and so, you know, but yeah, that, the idea behind it is that, you know, there, there are people who are at that level, you know, could be affected. Maybe there's a safety factor built in, but that's the idea.
Because at, I'm not sure if it was data from you or from Surprider, but at roughly the time of Harbor Fest in September, the value that I saw was seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
Which is a hundred and fifty times the threshold value.
Yeah, and so for for our samples, we cut it off at four hundred, right? So some of our samples could have been that high, but our assays could, you know, we do, I think we do a couple of dilutions, but to get that, you have to really, you know, dilute your sample out. But but yeah, and you know, and again, it's, you know, if it happened to coincide with Harbor Fest, you know, with maybe a lot of boats, that would suggest to me, unless there was concurrently a big rainfall event, that you've got a lot of boats.
There wasn't though, I looked at the rainfall there.
Yeah.
And there wasn't a. And there wasn't a, a, you know, rainfall at, at that particular time in September.
Yeah, so that would suggest both traffic. And, um, you know, if that's an event we wanna go in forward, Mary Ann, like this coming year, to, we know it's gonna happen again, get some sampling maybe before and after or before, during, and after, that could, you know, have value.
And one other question I have on the sewer treatment plant is, I believe they use a chemical called Z-Tag for a floculin coagulant, uh, to settle their tanks.
Okay.
From the, I forget, it's a safety data sheet, uh, on that. It says specifically that it's toxic to the marine environment.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know anything about it, but we need some, some.
I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah.
That if you look at the, the, what is it, the MSDS or whatever it is, it says specifically that it's toxic to the marine environment.
Yeah, but I, I guess I will say, I will say two things. One, as a floculant, what that essentially means is that it's meant to precipitate out. So rather than going out, it's likely probably mainly falling into the bottom of the tanks and being removed. And then secondly, towards every sewer treatment plant has a speedage permit, right? And so I think that speedage permit allows for the discharge. And so, you know, in, in that allowance, it's taken into account how many of this happened within the plant. Um, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You know, the upper code is a dead end code, but not a lot of washing act can clean it out. A, a very basic question, is it, in the middle of the summer, is it safe for people swimming?
Um, well, it, it's safer there from this, from the data that we have, I believe, that it is in, um, at Windmill Beach at least, so.
Yes, I have two people online that have.
Okay.
Several of those improvements, you have a question? Shannon?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Fantastic. Um, thank you very much. Uh, to the Village of Sag Harbor's Harbor Committee, to Mary Ann Edie, and in particular to Dr. Gobler, Chris, it's always wonderful to see you and take in your presentations. Just a couple of things, one, having to do with my old ears. Uh, I believe you were in the area of your presentation in the slides around the low forties, discussing the microbiome contamination in the Bat Cove. And I thought I heard you reference vessel discharge, but I'm guessing that might have been vessel discharge. It was the green and red histogram chart. So vessel as in vessel as in boats and crafts and things of that nature, yes?
That's right, yep.
Okay, excellent, wonderful, thank you. Um, second question, um, slide fifty-two, we're talking about, uh, the Havens Beach, uh, samples at that time. And, and I think what we were seeing is, um, fifty percent of, of samples being above the threshold in front of Havens, forty percent above coming from the east, twenty percent coming from the west, giving an indication that maybe there are some contaminant contributions coming from the east. Could that be possible, the developments to the east of Havens, um, dating back in some sections back to the nineteen forties, um, beachfront property and the fact that the bay's water table, uh, forgive me, I'm, I'm gonna phrase this poorly, but if I understand, there's a, there's a graph or a chart that shows the bay water that actually comes in below the ground. So if you have a house, uh, along the beach, you dig in a certain depth and you actually hit water that is directly attached to the bay versus digging in and, and, and getting dry ground. So it's possible that maybe older septic systems or, or maybe retired septic systems that haven't been dug out but have been capped and filled, could there be a concentration reasonable to think that maybe that's a source?
I, I wouldn't think so. Maybe, remember, we looked at what the types of bacteria were and they were mainly, you know, dog and bird derived, and it wasn't really human derived there. Um, and if anything, I think, you know, again, with the concept that the bacteria mainly transmitted through surface front offer than through groundwater. Um, if anything, towards the east there, it might be like Little Northwest Creek, which we know does have, uh, some bacteria, a, a lot of, it's not, it's not, and in that case, it's, it's sort of the wildlife thing, so, yeah.
Wonderful. Uh, two more, if the, if the committee will indulge me shortly. Um, it's good to hear that last answer because what it says to me is maybe there's a reasonable course of thought to think that, uh, during the high season, uh, when we get more usage, uh, in our village, we get more visitors to our village. The dog run area that is near the sump, that's in the Havens area, likely sees more dogs during the summer. Um, it is probably not an area, it's, it's an area that's very grassed over. I don't know how diligent folks are in being responsible for their dog's waste, but maybe that's a contributing factor there. And it's, and, and what we're seeing is, um, water levels from the bay being higher underneath the ground and contribute to greater usage of that area to canine use. All of those things may have some contributing factor. Fair to think in those terms?
Yeah, certainly, yeah, there's runoff off of the dog park. Um, you know, I, I don't know hydrologically how much of connection there is, but if there is, um, you know, that would definitely, you know, certainly, uh, be considered, you know.
Appreciate your thoughts on the matter. As a former undergrad under the MBRS and Mark's program with the National Institutes of Health, uh, on behalf of an, an old undergrad in Dr. Loui, Dr. Victoria Lewin's lab at Hunter College, please thank your undergraduates and your graduate students, and thanks to you. It's a phenomenal, um, thing that they're doing. And in particular, you have an undergraduate maybe with, uh, drink water or, um?
Yeah, yeah, Bruce Drinkwater.
I think that's a phenomenal last name for this industry, so please give them my regards and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your interest and your good questions.
Can I ask a question? Dr. Gobler, do you, what do you think is a good solution for the sump, for Haven's Beach, that runoff?
Um, I wanna think of the question if people didn't hear it was what's a good solution for Haven's Beach? And, um, it's very tricky because the groundwater is so low there. Uh, and so, and the water's gotta go somewhere, like it's coming from upper in the village. Um, the one idea is can that water be run, instead of running it out, can it somehow run backwards into ground? Again, this whole idea that the ground, the sand itself actually could at least pull out the bacteria. And really, I think that's the big concern. It's not an action concern, it's not a nutrient concern, but how can we get that water instead of, you know, running through that sump and out? Is there a way to somehow divert it backwards and have it go to ground?
There's, okay.
Yeah.
So, Doctor, you, you've concentrated on the inner harbor, I'll call it, everything west of Breakwater. We don't have outside Haven Beach great resource. The village is looking at, at using it differently. In terms of next week, we're gonna discuss expanding or creating more mooring fuels around the spindles and the, and the waterways and that sort of thing. And so there's concern because we know that there's eelgrass, uh, planting programs and, um, other things. And you talked about vessel discharge. So we're concerned about the presence of those vessels. I understand what the Coast Guard's responsibility is. I understand what the pump out station's responsibility is, but I also know what human behavior is. Uh, question one, is there a type of mooring that you would recommend that does little damage or less damage to eelgrass and other marine, uh, vegetation? Um, and how those programs, as well as the filter feeders, and how we can protect those if we expand these moorings and then temporary anchorings?
Is this still within the Breakwater?
No, this is outside Breakwater. This is, this is north of Haven's Beach, the Sag Harbor Bay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, technically, I don't know who does the permitting for all that, but I do know that like, when I wanna put things down on the bay bottom, the D E C makes me go through and get an Army Corps permit. And for an Army Corps permit, essentially what we have to prove is that we need to show what's on the bottom there. They need to prove that you're not replacing or getting in the way of critical habitat. So, you know, and, and I guess the best sample I can give is that we built, for example, in the past oyster reefs. Right? But before we could do that, we had to get a weapons permit, we had to get an Army Corps on bottom permit. Uh, and to get that permit, again, we had to survey that area and show that the hap, the new habitat we were creating was as good or better than the habitats that was already there. Um, so frankly, if there's eelgrass there, well, I don't know what the permitting process is for the mooring field. Um, but it just, it's hard to imagine that it would be different. Or maybe I should imagine that. I'm not really sure. I don't know what the.
We're going through that right now, and Elizabeth, do you know anything about the upgrading of the mooring field at this? You bring up a really good point because they are, in the big picture, going to reestablish the location as the mooring has become online, which seems like a good idea, but some do not, they don't wanna disturb some existing moorings. And I've never heard in any of this, if there has to be, if there is an analysis of the bottom before, during, or while there is a, a mooring.
That's why we're bringing it up.
Yeah.
So there's a work session too, so.
Right, but has it ever been historically, I mean, I know we, we allocate locations, but the bottom, the actual, uh, has that ever been?
They generally get, like, when you change the code for the waterways law with respect to moorings in the bottom land, that's only, you know, the state gets referred to as state. And the State Office of General Services, East Hampton Trust, James Pride, have a pretty good opinion about that because they own the bottom land. No, they don't.
No, we manage the, we manage those mooring fields, so it's, it's.
We've been, yeah, but they, overall, they did, they just ceded that to us, like.
I understand that's been three years ago, but what I'm trying to say here is that we've got some critically bad areas in the inner harbor. We've got what seems marginally to good in the bay. Let's not, let's not diminish the bay's viability just to embrace another thirty or thirty-five or forty boats or another hundred boats out there. And we need to do it with caution because I've been here as long as most people, seventy years, and I've seen that eelgrass diminish. It's not a twenty-year perspective, it's, it's, it's a lifetime perspective. And that resource is disappearing, we need to respect it and protect it. So I'm asking about, we're glad to know that a lot of the, the nitrogen that's empty, that's entering the bay is not from home, which is really good, but.
Actually, the bacteria.
The bacteria, I'm sorry, good distinction.
Yeah.
Um, but let's protect this resource before we find ourselves in a remedial position. That's all I'm saying. So before we plan a field, let's understand what responsible stewardship would entail.
Yeah, and like I said, the, the parallel that I think about is, is the permitting that I need to put stuff on the bottom just to show what's there now.
Um, do you think the, anything that's coming out of Little Northwest Creek could actually migrate to Haven's Beach? Cause I, I've been testing this surf rider for close to four years and almost every month we have, uh, prohibitive counts in the creek.
Yeah, I, I don't know the circulation there and don't know the essential might migrate, but.
But one year we did that, we, um, we went straight out from the, the sump and then we went five hundred feet and like five hundred feet to see like to what extent that bacteria was picked up both east and west, and it just broke right off, it's my memory. It's just.
My impression is, is that the main chunk is from, is, is east to west because of the movement of sand.
Yeah.
And, and so, um, my thought would be, maybe we'd like to do a supplemental program to, to monitor the water further east from the sump, uh, on the Haven's Beach shoreline.
Sure, yeah.
And we'd love to, and to have a conversation.
We can also look at some of the previous studies that actually did measure a bit to the east and see what answers that usually.
Cause D E C, I know they, they measure in the creek. Do they episodically measure anywhere near Havens?
I think they do, you know, I actually have a, um, a data inquiry request to D E C to get all of East Hampton people call for bacteria from their run. And so when I have that, I can answer that. You know, I, I know they're sampling out there, I don't know their precise stage.
That would be great to connect to them because I, I know that they have done this episodically and they, they post in the creek, no clamming, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but to reach somebody to get that information is, uh, a difficult task.
Did you have a, a question online, so they can.
Yes, um, Lisa, Lisa. We can't hear you.
Thank you. Uh, and thank, this is Lisa Stenson, Des Moines, President of the Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association, which, um, has beach facing Sag Harbor Bay. I wanted to ask Dr. Gobler, and thank you so much, uh, for your presentation and all of your research. Um, you did confirm with Shannon's question that your reference to vessel, Dr. Gobler, when you mentioned that vessel discharge is a second source of contamination and should be tightly regulated, you are referring to vessels in the Sag Harbor Bay Outer Management Area along with the village marina, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's boats and their, their boats, um, and the levels increase going from Windmill Beach to the ship of shore side. And that's the human bacterial signal. The human bacterial signal also increases from Windmill Beach, uh, north along the, um, the wharf there. So, you know, again, the levels were super high, but it, you know, it's showing that, it, once again, that yes, the boats are contributing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh. Oh, can I just have a follow-up? Um, just one follow-up really quick. Um, so in connection with these that are moored, anchored in the bay and outer management area, um, is there potential for, you know, chemicals and cleaning fluids that are used on those vessels?
Um, certainly, yes, that potential exists there. I, but I, I don't have any data to, to speak to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's nobody else online?
Okay, um, uh, maybe start in the back and then move to the front.
Yeah, just, um, you know, I live on Redwood, you walk around and every other waterfront property has the, you know, a little flag, the term telling you that they poured a lot of stuff on their lawn. How do you get the message to people, especially proximal to water, that a, a weed-free, pest-free lawn is costing you rising too much?
Um, good question, and, uh, if I knew the answer, I, I guess I would have been foolish by now, but.
No regulation, you can't.
Well, I mean, you know, the fact that you're seeing the signs, that's the regulation. Right now, the regulation is you have to, I mean, everything that's put down is permitted by the D E C. Uh, and but, and the D E C has in addition put up that sign, so, um, yeah, that's.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Gobler.
Good.
I know Suffolk County leads the highest poundage. I think we put down in twenty twenty-one, six million pounds of pesticides and herbicides, wow. We, we lead the highest of pesticide, herbicide use in New York State. What effect does that have?
Yeah, so the question is about pesticides and herbicides, I mean, um, it's a fair question.
Six million pounds, that's crazy.
A lot of pounds, um, you know, that's not, that I have a lot of experience with. You know, the herbicides could have an effect on some of the plant life, but.
Nitrogen, I mean, the, to obtain that perfect green lawn?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fertilizers, you could add that into the mix as well, but, um, you know, ideally, we don't have those getting into our, and, you know, these are also things we're getting into our drinking water supply.
Cause our water shit, and it's all gonna.
Yep, mhm, and, and, and it's, yeah, and, and then at first flush, it's going to our drinking water supply. So, uh, yeah, um, and then, you know, I'm sorry. Okay, well, either one of you, go ahead.
Oh, a quick question, hopefully. Have there been any changes in the C P F regulations as to paying for these type of studies?
Yeah, they don't favor, they don't favor studies, I've, they've, they've got that in many times.
Once, once a problem is identified,
Yeah.
they're supposed to do it, but they still.
They like to form the projects, but not studies. And, uh, you know, the, the downside of that is I, I tried to, actually, I had put in a proposal to East Hampton. actually, I had put in a proposal to East Hampton last year where it was actually the two things mixed, which were a different community. But I said, well, you know, we don't even know what the problem is. So, so maybe.
Yeah.
This, so the proposal was, well, we'll, we'll address what we're certain is one problem, but concurrently, we'll at least just very quickly figure out what the biggest problems are and sources of nutrients so that we're not misspending money, but, you know. And I mean, I get it, you know, law is a law and it was enacted by law and, you know, state law, I have to follow the letter of the law and uh so, yeah. And then, so yeah, tailwind up there. And then.
How do you determine the difference of the nitrogen in the water from fertilizers versus septic systems versus runoff?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um so that mainly we done via modeling studies. And so the idea being that first, you draft up what's called the watershed. So you had, you say that, you know, between this boundary, this boundary, the water's heading there, it's going out to this body of water. Uh and then within that boundary, you literally get a count of every single home, every single person, every single square foot of lawn. Um and you're based on that, and, and also all the impervious surfaces uh within that area. And then based on that, you could essentially figure out how much nitrogen is coming from humans um and how much is via wastewater and how much is coming via fertilizer. Uh there's some other techniques also that we've used in the past. Once you're in the water, you can actually get samples of, for example, like seaweeds um and determine seaweed being like a sponge and taking up nitrogen. You can actually look at the nitrogen in the seaweeds and actually differentiate it directly. Figure out, I mean, if it's mixed, you don't get a clear answer, but in so many, in some cases, we've gotten clear answers like, oh, they're definitely using wastewater derived nitrogen, or they're definitely using fertilizer derived nitrogen. Uh but when I referred to it earlier on, that was based on those modeling studies. And they've been done many times by many organizations. Um, you know, and independently comes to the conclusion that you count for the number of people and the amount of nitrogen contributing on a per year basis, and the amount of nitrogen that gets lost and retained before it discharges, um you know, wastewater derived nitrogen um is the biggest source.
For the same question then on relative to bacteria, if we're looking at the sidecarbocobe and uh upper sidecarbocobe areas, their percentage-wise has more human waste bacteria in them. How, where do we think that's coming from? Is it non-I A septic systems? Is it?
No, that's, I think it's from, from boats, actually. So, you know, if you look at the trends, they, as you move into the, from the runoff area to out in the boat fields, the percentage of human bacteria is increasing. And so if it's coming from the runoff and from land, it would be high and then go down. So you actually see the animals derive, or the dog derive bacteria high um right at the discharge point and then dissipate out into the water.
So when you correlate that with the rainwater, the rainfall amounts, the human boat traffic for the boat, the human waste in the water shouldn't really correlate with the rainwater.
Correct. And it, it didn't usually, and usually what you just see is that when we've done it, the other thing we've seen on that front is that it actually shows what, and expected to uh seasonal peak. As to say, you know, when you have more boats in the summer, those, the human derived is up. And then come fall, as there are fewer boats, that signal goes down.
Very good.
Yeah, I did. Um so you know, we've got these dotted lines and we have the swimmers and we have the shellfish and, you know, we're above and we're below, blah, blah, blah. But I'm wondering, and I don't think this is your area, but does anybody connect like people getting sick at those levels? Because I think a lot of times people might go swimming, they go out for a burger, they go out for fries, they feel terrible the next day when throwing up, and they blame the restaurants.
Right.
So how is it possible in any way to like make that more dramatic to people than in fact maybe we are getting ill? Or our kids are getting sick from, you know, the contamination that's in the water.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, when they, with the oyster deaths, uh what was the adjacency? Were there other illnesses that were reported or was it just two feet?
So, that's a very good question. And so, you know, there, I know in East Hampton, the town of East Hampton, beyond those three deaths, there were illnesses that some of which went to doctors and were reported as such.
Yeah.
And were highly suspicious of also being the favorable naphthaicus. Um and in other cases, there were just sort of, yeah, just one example. I know a woman, um, you know, she told me this story where she was on Labor Day in Montauk, cut her, cut her finger um like chopping vegetables. She like rented a place for the weekend. Uh didn't take much of it, went in the water and uh in, in twenty-four hours went from being, you know, the place she was renting to the um uh I guess there's South Hampton Hospital and then there's Sarniawood Hospital. She was in ICU within days and like near sepsis. Um, yeah, thankfully she recovered, but that, that's how it's, I mean, I, 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 I hate, I never wanna be alarmed as in this case, I, you know, you could be really alarmed. I mean, the, I'm, I'll just say, cause this isn't me, this is the C D C would say, cause I got it from the C D C website. One in five people who get infected with their bill of naphthaicus die within twenty-four to forty-eight hours because it's a very quick sepsis. And it's a, you know, it's a warm water bacteria, so it's used to body temperature. Uh, you know, it, it grows in those warm waters. So when the water is so warm, it's close to body temperature, um, things move quickly. And yeah, maybe I should have said that, but.
It will never go swimming again.
Yeah, I, I.
For the sake of our grandchildren.
Don't count us.
Yeah, not yet, sir.
I- isn't that bacteria found more often in brackish water?
Correct, correct.
So saltwater is a little safer as far as.
Correct, but we, you know, I, if you're interested, come to my state of the base presentation next Wednesday and I'm gonna actually show some data and between now and then, I'm gonna think about the best way to talk about that.
So, that's all?
Always interesting, surprising, and end of day.
Yeah.
We just see you. So, well, and I'm, I'm in this meeting, I'm writing this board. But just to say that.
My computer said I had to do is.
You really will. And, you know, I think you really said like that. The street does not have any more sewer nights.
Yeah.
And that was like a bad trade. The one time I was in that sewer.
So we would be interested in, like, if the, if, if, if some sort of.
Is the sound off there or?
The sound is off again.
Seems so.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
So we get happy for everyone.
Uh.
Dr. Gober, are you still there? I have, I have a quick question if you're still there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do right now. Okay.
Dr. Gober, still there?
Let's uh resume.
Okay.
Okay, item number two, uh sixty-eight West Water Street, uh the Westlands permit and the summer report. First coastal.
Anybody here for sixty-eight West Water Street?
That's a good reason to table it.
Table it.
Yeah.
I make a motion to table it.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have tabled sixty-eight West Water Street. Uh item number three. Um fourteen Vitali Zili. Is there someone here to speak of that?
Yeah.
There may be.
There he is.
Good evening, Board, and I'm the applicant. Oh, this is so quick. Uh we received a permit from you uh from the board. Actually, it was an extension a couple of months ago. We went through the process with all the other agencies, got down to the last agency, Department of State, Department of State, excuse me, Department of State said, you know what, we're out to get the elevated, a foot, a foot and a half, I'm not sure. So just, yeah, just to be careful, we came back to you guys, um, gave you the approved plan and I gave you a copy of the proposed plan with the elevation of the dock shown. There's no changes of dock line, dimensions.
Can we elevate it?
Location. It's just that it's elevated higher, which kind of felt like what you guys.
Yeah.
Kind of look for that anyway, but we just wanna make sure that every permit agreed. That's really what it is.
Any questions? John?
No.
Questions? Any questions?
No. Why shouldn't we like this better?
No, I agree. I just, you know, we just wanna make sure everybody agrees.
No, 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 no. I just, I'm asking you and you're saying like, no, there's no reason not to like this better than what we originally permitted, correct? Yeah.
This is more for making sure your records are.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand. I understand.
You got more of a copy of the plan or anything else? Yeah.
The question is, do we need to do a permit modification?
I think we should.
Not put like the solution, just to modify the record.
Yeah.
Most recent plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's for your protection, right?
Yeah, it's for your records too.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to adopt the plan accordingly?
Amend the previous permit?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend the previous permit. Does anyone second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
No notice.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Be well. Um, item four, twenty-seven Bay Street, discussion of proposed fence gate new location.
Looking for a lot of forty-five divisions. If you're the applicants, I hope we got clapping. I have a number of members in the audience. Um, this is an application simply on twenty-seven Bay Street and I don't have the place. Just the elevation. Um, we've been moving the fences and gates that are on twenty-seven Bay Street, moving it's so that it is more parallel with Bay Street. So we'll move it forward a little bit. It's going to be exactly the same as it was. You guys just got at it.
Yeah, we'll talk about it next month.
It's going to look exactly the same as it was. Um, I think the plans are submitted at this point. I wish we didn't have to have a public hearing on this thing. Unless the board has any question about the plan.
So.
And did review the plans?
Yeah, just give a quick overview for the board. Uh Chairman Sherman and I had talked about this. So the idea is to, you look, preliminary discuss the, the items to make. Um, the application is now being complete. We just now received the materials two days ago. Um, not in time to actually schedule the public hearing. But the idea is that we're gonna deem the application complete after the next meeting, open the public hearing. Um, and then, you know, if the board is were authorized Nelson Pope and Board to do so, we would prepare a draft permit to also be considered after the public hearing is closed at the next meeting. The idea is to double up to try to catch up, you know, to help the applicant get this um under construction, cause this is a minor application for improvement.
Sounds good.
So, the, the board so wishes they can have some preliminary discussion with the applicant tonight, but we're not talking about any kind of technical matters associated with the application because technically it's not yet on record.
Right.
It will be at next meeting, at next meeting, we'll be able to open the hearing, close it, and then be ready for the decision.
So what do we have to do?
So. So, yeah, I believe that you, you wanna take action tonight to um advise M P B to um finish their completeness. That's what we will do. And then as a matter of procedure, once the, the application is deemed complete, the applicant will be advised that Harvard Committee will start the public noticing procedure with the applicant. Then you can open the public hearing at the evening. So I don't think there's any kind of resolution that you need to make tonight.
No, no.
It's just a, just a recognition that if there's any questions, you should sort, sort of get that.
And please follow through with that time wise because I stepped on a few toes to get this here.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Application materials are in place. Again, we are ready to deem it complete, sufficiently complete.
So then when will they get the permit?
Next week.
Two months?
Again, there will be a decision for the board to make.
But if we like it, then they get a permit next month?
The same night of the public hearing, right?
Right, so.
At the same time, we're gonna be getting the air, we will start the things lined up.
If we wanna, I guess, we wanna make it clear, the committee could not adopt a resolution to advise Nelson Pope for these para draft permit.
To draft?
And related to?
Okay.
After the public hearing is closed, they close the public hearing and they say, you know, they order us to.
Okay.
So again, trying to put two pieces together in one meeting, that would be the only resolution that I think you might need is to order Nelson Pope and Board to get out in front of it.
So should we make a resolution to draft?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
See you next month.
Ed Brandt, thank you for doing that. And Elizabeth? Appreciate that. I think we have no more items to discuss.
Make a motion to.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.